Pledge.
Thank you.
Got a full agenda tonight. If you're here for Raymond Avenue or Hudson Heritage, those items will be adjourned. So let's move right into that first. Raymond Avenue School of Property Development involves agencies' seeker review, recommendations to the Town Board on zoning text amendment, and site plan public hearing regarding revised applications for the proposed Town Board zoning amendment for the new anchor project designation and the site plan of mixed-use project of 196 apartments and clubhouse and about 20,000 square foot commercial space and a 110-room hotel. I move that we adjourn the public hearing to June 20th, 2019.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We got six tonight, six to zero. All right. Nope, seven. We've got a full board tonight, seven.
Nope, six.
Oh, sorry, I counted Kristen there. Revised that, Bianca. Sorry. Want to welcome Bianca to the board tonight. She's filling in for Carol, who's out on vacation today. Next up, Hudson Heritage, review of conformance and seeker findings for a proposed modified development master plan for 750 residential units, 350,000 square foot commercial space, and adaptive reuse of the administration building with five other structures. I move that we schedule a special planning board meeting and adjourn the public hearing to June 14th, 2019.
June 4th.
At 5:00, June 4th, sorry, 2019 at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Okay, next up, 11 Manchester Road. Is there anyone here to represent that?
I am. I'm supposed to be meeting somebody that I don't know from the...
Right here.
Right behind you.
I don't know if he's here.
Come on up. 11 Manchester Road, public hearing, seeker review, special use permit review, and site plan review for a proposed use of the third floor of an existing residence as an apartment and for the associated site improvements. At 11 Manchester Road, Zoned ATC Arlington Town Center. Michael Ignoffo, this is a type-two action. Welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Please just give a quick overview of what you want to do.
You're gonna stop being an old man. You know that?
Good afternoon. Thank you very much. My name is Bill Rhodey.
I'm Tricia Martin Ignoffo, Mike's wife.
I see on the agenda here, we have done as the owner, just to make a quick correction, that it's Mike and Tricia Martin Ignoffo who's making the application.
Okay.
And basically, everybody has had their site plan and the layout of the buildings and the photographs. They had a chance to review them. All we're asking for is let us use the building. We're not going to put any additions on it or anything else like that. Just use the third floor as a single one-bedroom apartment. And by the way, I guess everybody knows that this has been on the Dutchess County parcel access as a three-unit building, and they've been taxed as such, too.
Yeah.
But all they got is two, so we want to make it three.
Make it conforming to the...
Just trying to, you know, I mean...
Legalize it, get it updated, get it all safe and the way it's supposed to be, so...
Building was originally built in 1930.
It's Mike.
Is Mike there?
It's Mike.
My rearview mirror is broken. I'm sorry. Excuse me. So it was constructed in 1930, well before the zoning laws were here in town of Poughkeepsie. I've been here since 1964, so working. But like, and the other part of it, too, is that the front yard was pretty much taken away with the DOT when they put the arterial in. Just kind of ripped it wide away, and so it's right up to the porch almost.
Yeah.
So, you know, technically, we don't comply to the 5,000-square-foot thing in terms of your bulk thing, but I just hope you consider that because we're down to 4,000, something like 340 or 4,400 square feet. So we're off maybe about 600 square feet for the lot size, but the reason why is because DOT kind of...
Taking, yeah.
But basically, that's it.
All right. Thanks. Kristen?
All right. So thank you, Bill, for the overview. Just a quick recap. So the item is on the agenda for a public hearing this evening. Seeker review, special use permit review, and site plan review. The item that Bill is referring to is actually related to the density, and in consultation with Lisa Cobb, we actually would like to amend the conditional special use permit and site plan resolution as it appears on the agenda or on your recommendation to include an item to consult with the zoning administrator further about the density calculation as the applicant may need to appear before the ZPA for a variance as it relates to density. So you could still grant the conditional approval and move forward should you find that appropriate, but...
So this is something in addition to the zoning letter that...
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We would just like some additional time to consult with our zoning administrator. So the item's on for a public hearing. As I mentioned, we're recommending to open the public hearing, hear any comments, close the public hearing should that be appropriate, adopt a seeker resolution for a type-two action, and adopt a resolution to grant conditional special use permit and conditional site plan approval.
All right. Thank you. This time, I moved that the planning board opened the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to comment on this application? Seeing none, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Let's go around the board. Any engineering issues here, Andrew?
You know, you have our comment memo. You know, there's just a couple of things that may need to be taken, looked at a little more closely. Manchester Road...
Andy, could you just move your microphone down? Thanks.
Sorry. The Manchester Road, we believe, is under DOT jurisdiction, so a DOT permit may be required for that.
I actually spoke with Mark Pfeifer this morning, and I actually took a ride by the site, and we've talked about this. It is, it does fall under town jurisdiction. We got confirmation from DOT as of late yesterday.
So then Mark will need to take a look at this wide opening.
And he's actually comfortable with the proposed changes to the curb cut as presented.
Great.
As long as the zoning administrator didn't have any comments. Mike and I did take a look at the code, and we don't foresee any issues with the width of that proposed driveway or curb cut.
And that resolves that issue.
The only comment I'd like to make for Bill regarding that is that the proposed changes to the curb, when you expand to use concrete, it's the preference of the highway department, not, don't just pave it blacktop. So that would keep it consistent with what's existing, the sidewalk and the actual driveway portion. Once you get up closer to the house, if you're going to blacktop it, that's fine on your property or closer to the house, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we plan to use the DOT curb cut regulations on that.
Oh, okay.
Just to make it consistent with the rest of the area.
Okay.
That's our purpose.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Okay.
It was just a clarification. He wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be blacktopped.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Because the only other thing I wanted to ask about was the parking spaces labeled number one in terms of who would be using it and how access to that particular spot would work, since it seems like it would be boxed in at times. Is that going to be under the control of the same tenant or so they could swap cars easily?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. I guess that's okay with me, if it's okay with the board.
Sounds good. I had a similar question on that, so thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, let's just go around the board, start with Bob.
The third floor is existing right now.
Correct.
And it's fitted out to have this one-bedroom unit up on top? And does it have a separate fire escape and emergency exits and...
No fire escape. We have two sets of stairs going down, one to the front and one to the back.
Okay, from the third floor.
From the third floor, as with all the other apartments, too.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So it's two means of egress, no fire escapes. As a matter of fact, the code these days are saying, you know, particularly up here in the northeast, where you have snow and you have to maintain a fire escape all the time, they'd rather not have them put on, you know, because what are you going to do? Okay, honey, go out there and shovel the fire escape. It snowed yesterday, so no fire escape.
It'll also be sprinkled, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that Tom Wycheck from our building department actually confirmed for me that there are, there's no requirement for the fire escape. The third-floor apartment will also be protected with a sprinkler system, and that there are two exit stairways to grade provided that will also be sprinkled.
Okay. All right, Natalia. All right, thanks. Rocco?
Nothing else at this point.
Nick?
Yeah, nothing else.
All right, let's go to Ben.
I think Robert covered it.
Covered, and Peter? Yep, likewise, that was my question, was the parking, so I think we're good to go here.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for seeker type-two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
In second, I called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional special use permit and conditional site plan approval for the 11 Manchester Road application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following, one through nine, addition time to consult with zoning administrator.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, thanks. Good luck. I see you've got instructions going on out there.
Thank you very much.
Sounds like you're bringing it all up to codes.
Thank you.
Next up is emergency one, 2555 South Road. Public hearing, seeker review, coastal consistency review, and site plan review to amend the existing approved site plan to include a second driveway access via Hudson Harbor Drive, Zone Business Highway District and WD-1 Waterfront District. It's a type-two action, FATM Properties LLC owner. Welcome back, guys. Looks like construction's going well out there. Thanks for pursuing this additional access.
Good evening. Dennis Lynch with Day Engineering. As you recall, we were in front of the board. We've got approval back in October of last year for the proposed site. Basically, it was removing the existing building that was there, proposing a 6,150-square-foot building. At that time, we didn't have, we weren't proposing an entrance onto Hudson Harbor. Since then, we have been in contact with them, and they are willing to grant an easement to have this second means of egress out onto Hudson Harbor. The other things on the plans remain the same. This was kind of known or anticipated, so the previous plans kind of took this into account. All of the other landscaping, lighting, other site improvements will remain the same.
Yeah, looks just on the plans you have to move to Hudson Harbor sign, but that's about it.
Right.
Yeah, the existing sign that we're relocating over here.
And then that lines up pretty well with the mall.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Any, Kristen?
Yep, so this is on for coastal consistency review, site plan review, and seeker review for a type-two action. Staff recommends opening and closing the public hearing should they see fit and adopting a seeker resolution coastal consistency determination and granting a conditional site plan approval this evening. Just a couple of items that came up from our discussion earlier. If Dennis could just confirm the acreage on area of disturbance, that would be great for the record and also for the board's benefit, and also the status of any agreements or any documentation you might be able to provide us with between you and Hudson Harbor for the record.
You want to handle first question, and I'll handle the second?
The limits of disturbance changed. I think it was the original plan, it was .76, and I think went to .77, so we're still well underneath the acre of disturbance that would trigger a full SWIP.
Okay.
I know there were some comments from engineering for additional spot elevations and profile, and we can provide those.
All right. As far as the second point, yeah, we've been back and forth. We've come to an agreement. They're drawing up the paperwork now as we speak. I was hoping to have it by tonight, but we don't, but it should be any day now.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Thank you. And that's going to be filed and all of that?
I'm sorry?
Is that going to be filed, or is this just, you're going to provide us just with that?
I think they're going to actually file it.
Okay, they'll take it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Kristen. This time, I moved that we open the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to speak on this application tonight? Jim, come on up.
Well, on the application, your documentation seems to indicate a second driveway access, and the plans seem to show this only being a going out onto Hudson Harbor and not coming in. Is that correct?
I think the traffic could, I think traffic could go both ways from Hudson Harbor.
It's not in the vehicle movement plan or in the drawings that they were submitted.
We can have them clarify that on the plan, but, yeah.
The vehicle movement plan is typically just for the emergency vehicle movement. It's not intended...
It looks wide enough for both, but is that the depression?
It's not intended to demonstrate for all traffic.
So as, again, a representative of the residents in Van Sickland Drive, I mean, we're only too happy to have this second exit and entrance and kind of hoping that it will relieve some of the fighting for the space on Route 9 as we come out of our streets. So that's, the second, the second thing I'd like to just bring up is, again, in the discussions at the last meeting, the comments by Mr. Finelli about the trees on our streets, I mean, I'd like everybody in the board to know that those seven trees are gone, all right? So the seven trees were all cut down, and what the residents wanted, what Mr. Finelli said was such a beautiful and thing, exit to our neighborhood, the decision was made for business purposes with the arguments from the, from the emergency one people that they needed those extra parking spaces and they couldn't move the garbage location. So we're living with it again, and we're, what we're, I think there's still a big hole is that none of the plans showed anything but two trees along the whole setback from, between the property and Van Sickland Drive. There were two trees put in that helped one of the residents where there was a hole in the tree canopy that's currently there. So we're still looking for emergency one to follow through on what was commented on in the decision letter, which, which said, let me see what the decision letter said. Applicant agreed to work with the town to cooperate landscaping on the south side of the proposed fence along Van Sickland in the town right of way. So that was recommended by you, it was recommended by the chairman at the last meeting before he departed, but we haven't seen anything. We're hoping that whatever action goes on, on the south side in terms of removal of dead trees and adding of new trees, that it's something positive and, you know, and looks as nice as the building and all the property looks on the other side of the fence. So we're still looking at this from our side of the fence and hoping that it, it comes to a wonderful fruition, so, thank you.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else in the audience which to comment on this application? I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
You guys can come back up.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I just want to note, the landscaping plan still calls out for those trees that was still, that's still part of the application, the, when, when the, right now, it's under construction, obviously, and when they put the landscaping in, we'll...
Yeah, under construction. They won't get a CO without their landscaping done, so...
Yep, so it all goes in at the end, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Get the bulldozers out of the way.
Especially if we're going to take the fence down and everything else.
Right, right. New fence, et cetera, is in the plan. All right, anything else? Andy, on the, you mentioned...
The, I guess, is there any, we didn't put it in the letter. Is there any, has there been any discussions with the DOT about making the, with the new access? Has there been any discussion with the DOT on making the entrance from Route 9 enter only?
It wasn't brought up by any...
No. Okay, all right. No, I think everything else is in our letter. I don't think there's really anything else. Everything else has been touched on already from my point of view.
All right, thanks. Go around the board, start with Peter this time.
Congratulations. This agreement would be a real enhancement for that property. I would like to say, I think that in the resolution to grant conditional site plan approval, we should spell out that a copy of the agreement should be part of the conditions of approval.
That's fine, yeah. I think Andy actually, someone like engineering specifically thought that in their review, but yes, we can do that.
All right, Ben?
I agree with Peter. I think it's a great addition. You just, you just did the one in Hyde Park, too?
We actually, yeah, we moved locations there.
Yep. I was up there recently. Did a good job. It really looks nice and...
Thank you.
Seems to be working well. That's all.
All right, thanks. Nicole?
No, nothing for me. It looks great, and I think the final product is going to be great, and I live right down the road, so I'm sure I'll be visiting.
I'd love to have you.
Thank you.
Those darn kids, they get into...
Yeah, unfortunately.
Rocco?
Yeah, I'm good here, but it does look very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Bob?
Yeah, nothing for me.
All right, I just want to add, again, my thanks to the construction, and you had done a lot of changes in the plans for the neighbors as goes, as you went through, and I know you had to take down a few trees, but, but tried to minimize that, and there's still a nice stand of trees there that'll be behind the trash there, and hopefully all that gets finished up soon. Do you have an idea of your timetable?
August, September.
Okay, great. Good luck with the continued construction.
Thank you.
And I think we're ready for motion.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets criteria for a seeker type-two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the emergency one amended site plan application is consistent with the town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for emergency one amended site plan application, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following, one through eight.
Second.
And we'll add nine.
Add nine for...
Nine.
Copy of the agreement.
Copy of the agreement, okay.
The access easement.
Access easement agreement.
Fully executed agreement.
And nine, copy of access easement agreement.
Second again?
Second.
It's been moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right?
Thank you.
Next up, Cabanita Restaurant Outdoor Seating. It's a public hearing seeker review and site plan review for proposed outdoor seating to include the removal of existing concrete ramp and stairs and the installation of a new landing and stairs, concrete patio, and decorative retaining wall. 763 Main Street, Zoned ATC Arlington Town Center. The type-two action, 763 Main Street LLC owner. Welcome, guys.
Good evening. Yuri Pinello.
Steve Bernaby, Meserelli Architecture and Planning.
So just to give an overview, so what we're looking to do is there's a pre-existing ramp that was, that served as handicap access at one point, so we're looking to replace that and just add door, add outdoor seating, a patio space. So that's essentially the bulk, yeah, it's pretty simple, straightforward, I believe.
So it was an existing ramp. It didn't comply with current ADA requirements. The railings don't comply. The slope doesn't comply.
Too steep.
So, yes, so we've provided a handicap lift on the other side of the building, and so in hopes to provide outdoor seating on the east side.
Okay. Kristen?
So the application is on for a public hearing seeker review and site plan review. Staff definitely had some comments related to the parking layout. I had actually been in touch with the applicant since our last discussion, and I think that they were working through some alternative layouts for that. Also, there was a comment about the liquor license and to what extent that covers the parcel and the area that you're now looking to have the outdoor dining, so I would ask that at some, when I'm done here, if you could just address that. So staff is recommending opening and closing the public hearing if the board sees fit, adopting a seeker resolution for a type-two action, and adopting a resolution to grant conditional site plan approval.
Okay, thank you. Let's move right into that, then. I moved that the planning board open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone in the audience which to comment on this application? Seeing none, I moved that the planning board close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second and called to question. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six to zero. Let's go for any engineering comments?
I guess the first thing I'm going to ask is, are you aware, is there a grease trap for this, for this property?
Yes, there is. It's on the backside of the building.
In-ground?
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. Is that, I don't think I've seen it on the plan. Is that something we can show on the drawings?
It's on the, I have a revised plan.
Okay, you got one revised.
Just, yes.
Okay, great, good. I think we talked about the ADA parking already. I don't believe that the, the way that the loading area was shown for the ADA space was, I didn't think that was quite the way that would comply with ADA. Do you have an idea of where you, you're going to relocate it, or you have another layout that you're proposing?
I brought a not-to-scale quick site plan with a revision showing handicap parking, which, again, we will provide, you know...
So you have a revised layout to show us?
Yes, we have a revised layout. With regard to the parking itself, the building from the, from the front existing retaining wall to the building stairs is only 35 feet. So for us, in my layout here, I did a 90-degree parking layout as requested or, you know, as asked for us to do. So with the 18 feet, it only gives us 15, 17 feet to the stairs of the existing building.
Okay, that's on the front of the building, right?
So we can send you, you know, the couple of layouts, and we can discuss...
Yeah, I think we can work on it.
What you think works best.
We'll work with you.
Okay.
No problem. Um, travelings, so, the ref, the, the garbage truck, um, they typically drive in, they can, they can get to the back there?
Yes, actually, on the, on the plans, the original location for the, um, the dumpsters was in the back and at their behest, I believe, um.
Royal.
Uh, Royal suggested that they be moved up front in the parking, so we did. But, uh, with these revisions, they're gonna have to go in the back, and they were able to access it just fine.
They, they're able to get in and get turned around, or they have to back out onto the street?
It just made it easier for them, and that was their suggestion, but if it's, obviously to comply, we put it in the back of the building once again.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll just need to confirm that there's, there's enough room.
Yeah.
So, maybe showing that on a plan sheet as part of the next submittal.
Sure.
For review.
I think that's all I have for now.
All right, thanks, Andy. Let's go around the board. Ben, do you have anything?
Where are you gonna have that outdoor seating? It's pretty steep over there, isn't it? Like, an incline.
There is an up slope on it, correct, as far as the.
Yes, our intention is to remove the ramp and the stairs and regrade so that it, it won't be as steep as it is. We plan on leveling it out and providing a level patio for people to sit and eat at.
Okay, all right. And, uh, you're gonna have heaters out there, I think we said?
Yes, absolutely. Come to fall, right, it'll be necessary, so.
Propane heaters?
Um, I don't know if the, there's those ones that traditionally you see outdoors, outdoors speaking, they're like, uh, like umbrellas, you know, I don't really know how to describe them, but that's what we anticipate using.
Anything is approved with the fire department?
Right, correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
That was it.
Yeah, they're usually bankin' and.
Yeah.
Uh, Peter, anything?
What's the, the seating capacity for the restaurant?
The, I believe it's one seventy-four. The.
Really?
Yeah.
You have ten tables outside, which would.
Right, that's what the suggestion is, but that's what we're.
There would be an additional forty.
Potentially, right. There'd be two tops, four tops, so anywhere from thirty to forty, depending on.
So, be two hundred and ten. And, and this is in the Arlington Town Center.
Yep.
And my concern is, uh, is parking. You have two hundred and, over, over two hundred and ten people, God bless you, I hope you fill every chair every night. But, you know, my concern is, where, where do you anticipate people will find parking?
Um, well, that's total occupancy, the one seventy-four, as far as seating, I know that's, that's a lower amount.
From what I've heard about your restaurant, you will, you will fill it.
Oh, I want to, thank you.
Not a big problem. I'm just concerned where, where people are gonna find.
Honestly, a lot of people that come in, they, they're not aware that they can park along Main Street, they're apprehensive to park on it, after our suggestion, they're, you know, even in front of Holy Trinity, or going on our side, or towards, um, in front of Dunkin' Donuts, that strip, same thing, they really don't know that they can park there. I think there's some, I guess, restrictions on it, but, so that kind of alleviated some of the, uh, the stress from that, yeah.
Is there anything in the Arlington Town Center that addresses, um, I know we, there are parking regulations, but two hundred and ten seats, and, and only providing.
Well, how many, how many people does your restaurant seat?
It's definitely less than one seventy-four right now. I believe that's the.
That's the.
Right, exactly. I'll have to verify, but it's much lower than one seventy-four. And that's because there's a back private, uh, party room, and that's why that, that's where that figure stands.
Yeah, my, my only concern was you adding forty more seats to that one seventy-four, I would bring it up to two fourteen, which, it seems, I'm not in the restaurant business, it just seems like a lot of people for the amount of parking that you have on site, even though it's pedestrian friendly.
Right.
We want to encourage in there on the Town Center, we want people to walk, you know, and enjoy it, we want it to be vibrant. Um, but if you satisfy, uh, that requirement, that's, that's fine, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I think they exceed their required parking calculations by one parking space.
Yes.
As it was currently laid out and what we, we have before us now. And I know that might actually, we might end up losing a parking space with reconfiguration and making it a little bit, um, easier to navigate the parking lot, but I would be interested in knowing, you know, right now, how do most of your patrons come in? Do they take the bus? Do they walk? Are there parking issues?
It's, uh, well, to make sure we have a good crowd coming in from Vassar College, a lot of student bodies come in, some walk, some bike, so that's a good portion of that.
Do you have a bike rack?
What?
No, I'm serious.
Yep. We should, actually, that's something that we probably should look into, just because it, it is a good amount of our business, actually, the Vassar crowd.
It was on my list to ask, because we have, we've been, you know, different restaurants along Main Street have added them, the McDonald's, the Taco Bell, the various places.
It's recently come on my radar, yeah, so.
So, it's something we're gonna ask for.
Yeah, one of our patrons came in saying she, uh, she was doing some bike trail tour, and she, uh, group members, and that's about, uh, three weeks ago, she mentioned, that's when it first came on my radar, really, to add something, so that's something's under consideration.
Yep, so we're, when you're looking at the parking reconfiguration, to consider that. If you can find a good location to put it on the plan, that'd be great.
There's no parking availability on Jones Street, is there?
Um, no, there's not, really, no.
Well, if there's any, you know, co-sharing, you know, if the church is amenable to some people parking up top, but that'd be something you have to discuss with them.
Right. Uh, the other considerations, too, is, uh, across the street, the Dunkin' Donuts, half of that parking space is rarely used, actually, and that's something we might have to, uh, consider going as well, or, or speak to the owner of that, so. And if I may, there was a concern with the SLA, just Monday, I submitted an application for alteration, just in form of the possibilities, and so, I'll wait to hear back from them, so.
So, would we make that a condition?
That'd be conditional to.
How does that work?
That'd be conditional.
Um, for the, the liquor license, um, um, yeah, I mean.
I would recommend that the board make it, um, you know, if you just have the applicant provide proof that the alcohol is available to be served outside, or else that you won't be serving alcohol outside, one or the other.
If I remember well, we approved Dunkin' Donuts, that lot is not all owned by Dunkin' Donuts, is it?
At the time that application was approved, the, uh, the two parcels, I believe, were in common ownership, Dunkin' Donut, the, the property owner was purchasing it from another owner in conjunction with that plan.
All right.
Uh, and one other question I had is about music. Uh, will, will you be providing music outside?
There, there will be no, there will be no music outdoors, no.
Should we make that a condition of approval?
Um, I think if you just include a note on the plan, because then that's enforceable.
Isn't it part of the, I think the zoning says no outdoor, no outdoor music, so.
There you go.
There's an old saying, the faintest ink is clearer than the sharpest memory.
You created that. Uh, what else were we saying? Sorry, just taking a note. Uh, move on to Nicole here, anything?
So, uh, I've been to your restaurant only once, but, um, it was a Friday or Saturday night, it was very busy, and there was no parking. And where you're gonna have the outside seating, how many parking spots does that take away? Two, three?
Actually, it, there's only one spot on the side there that has been, it's been requested to be removed.
Okay, because I think the night that I went there, there was two or three cars parked on that side.
The people that park in the, on that up slope are the, typically, the owner, sitting behind me, and then, uh, staff or employee, that'll be on there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you going to be doing any landscaping or lighting, um, outside?
As far as lighting, lighting was not anticipated within.
No, no lighting, no landscaping.
You already have lighting, like, against the building that is gonna be used for the outside?
Yes.
Okay, um, so you're gonna be resealing and restriping, right? Because that parking lot is a little bit of a mess.
We are gonna have to do that, yes.
Okay, um, and, uh, so, I just want to get this clear, because when I was there, I was with my mother, who has RA. So, we parked in a parking spot that was deemed handicap. However, she had to walk up the, the front stairs. Now, I know you guys said something about a handicap lift or something like that, is that something that you just recently put in?
No, it's in, and I believe one of the suggestions was better signage to inform the crowd that it's on the left-hand side of the.
Yeah, we had no idea it was there.
Yeah, so that's going in.
And so, how many handicap spots are you going to have, then? Just one, two?
We will have one handicap spot, it will be here along the west side of the building, adjacent to the lift.
Okay, okay. Um, I just wanted to make a, a comment, per water department, that your backflow prevention testing was last done in two thousand and twelve, so you have to get that done and provide the certification to the water department. And other than that, I think that's all I had.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Rocco?
I think I'm, uh, good. I have eaten there, and it was quite good, so I hope, uh, we can get everything worked out, and, uh, wish you a lot of success.
Thank you. And Bob?
Uh, nothing else from me, but listening to all of the comments about the food, I'm gonna have to eat there.
All right, thanks, everyone. Uh, I think your parking is one of the biggest issues, so we'll make that a condition to explore parking with the, the neighbors to see if there can be additional, uh, cross easement thing there.
Oh, you want to make that a condition of approval, or?
To explore it, looking at, with the church, and if that's something that sounds, or should we?
Well, you have two options. You can either ask the applicant to do that before you grant your approval for the outside, or you can grant the approval conditioned upon exploring alternate options. So, it depends whether you think the existing parking is sufficient for the proposed use right now.
I mean, it's meeting the code.
Yeah.
I would.
I would think it might be better to let them, I mean, I think if they need parking as their, you know, patients come in and talk to them about the parking situation, that they should, they can work with those adjoining properties and work and explore that, but I don't think we need to condition.
Okay.
Approval on that.
And, uh, the other thing, I, we talked about the bike rack, to include that as a, include that as a condition as well. Um, I did have a question on, so the, the level of the patio now is gonna be down below the stone wall?
That's correct.
Okay, and what's the deal with the, the two doors are at different heights now, and I see just one, one, uh, set of stairs coming down, is, with the new plan, is that one of those doors is gonna become defunct, or?
Well, no, what, what'll happen is, either we'll put a step, uh, a set of stairs in the landing, or, uh, we are gonna close off that door, and there'll, there'll be one door off the side of the building.
That's, so you're closing off that.
We're gonna talk about that.
The rear door that's further back.
That's something we have to finalize between, you know, how they, how they're running that, and, and how we're gonna.
Yeah, you have to make sure the waiters and waitresses have the proper access, et cetera.
The second door back, the higher door, it gets us directly into the kitchen.
Okay.
So, we might close that one off and have everything come out the side door adjacent to the bar, or we will keep both doors there.
Keep both, but then you have to put a couple steps, additional steps.
Couple of steps, or, or another ramp.
Or a little ramp it down.
Ramp from the top of it, yes.
To that other door, where, but it has to be level at some point before you, at the top of the stairs.
That's correct, yes.
Um, any complaints from the, the neighbors across the street, I guess? How, how are you gonna light the, light this up? There's a.
The lighting is there, it, it's been there since the restaurant opened. Um, it's a wall-mounted light over the, uh, the, the exit door.
Okay.
And it's bright enough now that it lights up that area.
Lights up the patio, so how, so how late will it, you'll be serving outdoors there?
It's gonna be a regular operating hour, so right now, it's currently Monday, or during weekdays, it's eleven AM to nine PM, and then.
Nine PM, okay.
Eleven to ten, uh, to ten PM on the weekends, so, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll stay the same, so.
Because that house is fairly close to, to this new patio now, it's just right across the street.
Oh, the, uh, right, the church is administr, I think they're administrative.
So, it's not, it's not somebody living here?
No, it's administrative offices for the church, I believe, yeah.
Okay, that clears that, my concern up with that. All right, I guess we're ready to go. I'm gonna put in, uh, the music bike rack and provide proof for later. But this, this is part of the zoning, so we don't really need that. There's the parking, let's get that.
Okay. Okay.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for seeker type two action pursuant to seeker part six one seven dot five, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Insected for seeker, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for La Cabanita Restaurant Outdoor Seating, application subject to the following: respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive but not limited to one through nine, provide proof that you can serve alcohol outside, and ten, bike rack.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant conditional, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Sounds like you got a little bit of work to do to, to make sure you've worked with the department to clean up those issues, what you're doing with that door, and, et cetera, and the parking layout, and signage for the handicapped as well, make sure that's all. So, all right, good luck.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
This time, I'll, I'll move that we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. We ask that you please leave your comments to no more than three minutes, and the board will consider any comments made during this portion of the meeting, but will not respond to them during the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded for public comment, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to comment on any other agenda items tonight? Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Did I see, does someone have a comment?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
On more agenda, the upcoming agenda?
Come on, come on down.
The, the upcoming agenda?
Yeah, well, anything on tonight's agenda?
Oh, okay. Um, I had emailed earlier today, so I just wanted to make sure that it was part of the, um, your review.
Can you please state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Margaret Ann Mulligan. I live on two one seven eight New Hackensack Road. I'm the bordering neighbor of Paulus Public House.
Okay.
And you emailed something earlier today?
Yes, and I just was, um, wondering that, uh, it was, it was a couple of pages, so do you.
We, we wouldn't, uh, we, I don't know if we received anything.
Is that from Kirk Sheridan?
No, that was a separate, a separate one.
Okay, then, I, we, I don't have it.
To whom did you send it? Uh, was it to?
Email address online.
Oh, so it was the planning department's email, and Carol was off today, and we probably didn't look at it. Okay, so, we, we will have it, and we will distribute it to all of the members.
Thank you so much, appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks. For anyone else who wants to comment on tonight's agenda items? Seeing none, I move, we move, we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes six to zero. All right, next up on the agenda is Faith Assembly of God subdivision, lead agency intent and preliminary subdivision review major for a two-lot subdivision resulting in the creation of three lots. The two fifty-four Spackenkill Road, Zoned R twenty, resident single family, it's twenty-six point seven-five acres, it's an enlisted action, Faith Assembly of God Church is the owner. Welcome, explain your project, Sam.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Paul Tierms, uh, PE, representing Faith Assembly of God for this project. Uh, this is for their, uh, property off Spackenkill Road, uh, where they previous had this school, uh, church functions. Uh, currently, as you probably know, they have moved their facilities and operations over to Casperkill, and this is mainly a vacant property here, uh, that they are currently trying to, uh, sell. Uh, but they are trying to make some income here to, uh, they do have upkeep on this property every year, that's costing them, uh, a bunch of money, so we're, they asked me to provide a two-lot subdivision, uh, that backs up the, uh, the local road. that backs up the uh, the local road. Brentwood Drive in the community, R twenty thousand, twenty thousand square feet zoning. And so it's uh, kinda simple, uh, two lots, uh, each almost about one point three acres, which we also, at the same time here, are going through Board of Health approval. Uh, we are designing septic systems. There is town water on Brentwood Drive that we would look to hook into. And it would be for uh, single-family homes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for the overview. So the application is on for lead agency intent and preliminary subdivision review major. This is actually, um, I just wanna make sure it's clarified for the record that it's a three-lot subdivision, so it's one parcel and then they're subdividing two lots off of that, so it will, it, it does get classified as a major, is technically a three-lot subdivision. So I do have some preliminary comments uh, regarding the EAF that was submitted. Nothing earth-shattering, I just thought to tighten it up, so there's nothing that would stop it from being circulated for lead agency intent this evening um, in your resolution. And uh, I do have some preliminary subdivision review comments also listed here. I know there are some comments from engineering, the water department and um, the fire department, which we'll continue to work through as we progress through the review of the project. So again, just uh, staff recommends the adoption of a secret lead agency intent resolution and deferring action on the application pending the establishment of a lead agency.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, I did receive from Carol email of all the different comments from the different departments.
All right, good. We'll continue the comments tonight then. Andy, you have any?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, as I noted in the, in the, in the letter, uh, it looks like they're gonna be over the one acre threshold, so a SWIP will be required, probably just erosion controls, I'm sure you're aware. Um, and I guess I would just ask, um, as far as your health department approval is going, have you done soil tests? Are you fairly comfortable with the size of the septic field at this time or that it'll come?
We have, I'll be submitting the, the plans for the first time to the health department tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, we did soil tests, I believe, back in March, uh, and then, then a couple of weeks later, we followed with the percolation tests.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, um, one lot had a better percolation rate than the others, um, but they were, I think we're both in the sixteen to twenty-minute
Okay.
range of design.
Right, and you didn't hit any, anything that would require a fill system or anything?
Yeah, they're, they're about three feet of fill in either of them. I think one's two foot six and one's three foot six of uh, fill required. We hit rock. We hit rock around three, three and a half or feet down uh, for, for most of the holes.
But this design leaves room for that, that fill that you'll need to put in?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Andy. Let's go around the board. Start with uh, Bob?
So there, there are no plans right now to actually develop these lots? This is just subdividing it to, for the uh.
Subdividing to uh.
Allow that opportunity to build on it.
Yeah, I think they were looking just to sell the lots as a Board of Health approved billing lots. Yep.
And, and the water line runs, you're gonna, the town water runs right by those?
Yeah, runs, it, it kinda follows the curve of Brentwood Drive uh, to, is it Daria, Daria Drive? The, the water line runs actually right on the, off the shoulder of the road on this side where the lots are.
Okay, and there's no, there's no sewers on this, in this area, right?
Correct.
So this is all septic?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't have any other comments.
All right, thanks, Bob. Nothing at this time. We'll see how things progress from here.
Just a couple of things. Uh, I just wanna reiterate something the fire department said. Uh, driveway to the lot should be twelve feet in width. And because this um, particular area uh, is in the area of Indiana Bat, any trees that should be taken down should be taken down between the months of October and March. I believe it's October fifteenth and March thirty-first. Also, because there is the possibility of this third lot, which was a church, to be sold again as another church or something to that extent. We're gonna, um, they should possibly look into screening the properties from that back part of where the driveway would go up into the, what is still the church and I believe there's another building there as well, right? Just so that if a church or some other type of um, uh, institution such as a church bought that and there started to be a lot of traffic there, uh, these two residential areas wouldn't, you know, see that as much. So that was my only comment.
It, it is wooded through that area, but certainly where the driveway of uh, cath, of the Faith Assembly of God wraps up to the church.
Right.
There is some open grass area and we could try to provide some plantings along that lot. I think then the people only have to clear whoever buys the lots as, as much as they need on, on these new lots.
Right, because they're not building the homes, right? So we just have to, you have to demonstrate the buildable area and maintaining a buffer, you know, so there's no, no um, homeowners looking out at a parking lot, but ultimately whoever comes in.
For traffic.
The property will, you know, figure out exactly where they want to face, but yeah, if you could just demonstrate um, the maintenance of that buffer or some kind of a buffer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Ben?
Oh, they seem to, that was.
Covers it.
Some of the things I was gonna ask. No other questions for lead agency I think are okay.
All right, uh, Peter?
It's uh, not within our authority to advise whether or not, you know, if you take a site and you carve out a section and call it a lot, whether it's not within our authority to say, will, will that actually work or not? But when I look, for instance, at lot one, when you look at the elevations, you have a drop in elevation in lot one of forty feet and about, and about the same length, which is, and you have the house sitting right on top of that ledge. Doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And you have a drop in elevation from, from the west side of lot one to the west side of lot two. You have about a seventy-foot drop in elevation and the reason that, you know, the secondary reason that's a little concerning is that they all drain into a flood zone. So I'm, I'm not an engineer, but at some point, we're gonna have to have some assurance from, from our engineer. You know, that, when, once you start taking trees out of there, once you start adding uh, pervious services, whether or not that's gonna, that is gonna drain properly, particularly since it's going into a flood zone area.
It'll certainly drain properly. The, the problem will be preventing it.
Effect.
From.
How we can slow it down.
From getting, becoming a problem.
So at some point, you're probably gonna wanna see some, some mitigation for that, for the runoff, the potential runoff from, from lot A down to the flood zone.
We can add those type of measures to the SWIP.
Right, that'll be part of the SWIP, yeah.
Yes, but that's something we're gonna be taking a close look at.
Okay, yeah, one of the uh, chairman's of the board of the Faith Assembly of God owns a very large construction company, so I think you know, he, he liked the house on the one side being up higher, give you a good view if, if you walk the property. And uh, you know, he might cut out a, a pad in there, you know, for, for his selling point. He has a lot of means and methods that aren't available to probably normal people.
Yeah, well, we'll look forward to seeing them. I hope that works out. Is there also, is there a set, you know, the, the driveways are set very close to the property line. Is there a setback requirement?
You know, I called it out about how, how close the one driveway was to the other. I don't have an exact number for you.
But we'll wanna look at that. Just be certain uh, when you've, the next round, that the setback requirement for that driveway is, is satisfied.
Yeah, when people shovel those driveways, you gotta be some uh, space for snow between them.
Yeah, I think right now they're each five, six feet off the property line, so ten, twelve feet between them. That's the way they're set now, but I, I'll check to see if there's any requirements of the town for that setback. I didn't see any in my first review, but I'll recheck.
Highway department was out there or took a look at it, right?
They were fine.
They were fine with the uh, the driveway?
Yeah, there's about ten feet between mine and my neighbor, so it's, it kinda works, but the snow gets high at times, so if they, could be a little further apart, that, a little better, but.
Yeah, some of the fill of the septic system and the side slopes have, we didn't want them that close, but it's kinda pushed them a little bit towards the property line.
Okay. My comments has, you know, most have been answered. As Nicole brought up, the, the buffering, you know, it's not just the, the road coming up with the parking lot, if that becomes utilized as a church, that's right in the backyard, you know, right close to the house where it's proposed on the lot anyway. So. Guess that's it then. Go here, motion?
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency coordinate to environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second. Moved insequented for lead agency. Called to question. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning depart, the planning board defer action on this application pending the establishment of a lead agency and direct applicant to respond in writing to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following one through nine.
Second, anything else? I think we got, that's it.
I think that's it, yeah, because some of the other comments will be captured in a further, on an additional submittal.
All right, second.
As for response.
Moved insequented for uh, defer. Called to question. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right, we'll circulate for the agency and uh, see you back here for next, whenever you get the next middle in.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Paulus Public House Site Plan Review for Current Conditions and for the addition of a shed and bocce ball court on a site with non-conforming restaurants and outdoor seating area at twenty-one eighty-six New Hackensack Road, zoned R twenty residential. It's a type-two action, Yobo Properties LLC owner. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Dennis Lynch with Day Engineering, follow from Paulus Public House. We were here a couple of months ago. Um, since then, we have, have provided the, some additional information that was requested on the plans. We did receive the comments from the town for some additional information, which we're working on. Basically what the application is for, um, is for the.
Dennis, could you grab the microphone?
Thanks.
Yep.
Approval of the existing patio that's there, that was a, granted a um, a variance from the ZBA. We are proposing to have a shed here and a bocce ball if zoning allows it. And then we're also, since there is an existing site plan on file, um, to basically, this would act as that site plan showing the existing conditions and what's there now.
There isn't an existing. So the existing trash stays there and it's, and the shed behind it?
Yes.
Okay, interesting. Doing that. All right, Eric?
Uh, yeah, as, as, uh, almost a year ago, the application in front of the board is for site plan. There's no, no, as Dennis mentioned, there's no known site plan on file. So the, the goal, I think, in this case for the planning board is to obtain a site plan that codifies the conditions, both existing and proposed on the site. The main focus being the outdoor dining area, uh, which is subject, which was approved by the ZBA as an additional use, but it's subject to site plan approval and then also the, the various features on the property, including the proposed bocce court and the shed. So the, the applicant has made a fair bit of progress in getting some information on the plans. We do have a number of comments relating to refining some of that area. So the information is scattered. We'd like to see it a little bit more complete um, with those comments. If those comments could be addressed for next time, then we would think that, that information would make the plan suitable for a public hearing uh, at that future, next in the middle perhaps. With regard to the specifics for tonight, um, the planning board, well, you have our, our comments relating to, there's some comments in particular relating to definition of the outdoor seating area and making it a little bit more defined to the area as permitted by the zoning board's decision. Also for the parking area, uh, the board may want to discuss outdoor lighting and use on the property and the parking area as a guide to future decision-making. So with that, we're recommending that the uh, we're recommending the planning board discuss the action and defer the application subject to additional information.
Thanks, Eric. It's not a public hearing, but let's go around the board for some additional comments. Let's start with the engineering again.
Okay. I understand the parking area is gravel. Is there any intention of delineating the parking spaces at all, or is it, is it just, this is just kind of a conceptual layout?
The, uh, right now we're showing the parking spots just as a visual. Um, the intent is to keep that as gravel and to not delineate the parking. That's the way it's been for years and there hasn't been real, any, any issue with the, um, the parking.
Okay, all right. Um, I guess the main reason I ask is that the, the, the light fixture, the pole, I think it's, the, the light fixture that you're planning to put on is on an existing pole.
It's an existing light that's there.
It's an existing light. You're not making any improvements that way, or?
No.
Okay. The reason I ask is that it appears to be in the center of the aisle, the parking aisle that, that uh, is laid out on the plans, that's all.
Okay.
That, I don't, I don't know if there's anything to be done about it, but that's, it was, it would appear to obstruct movement if, if that, that layout were to be used.
Like I said, there's no, I mean, we're not gonna be striping or marking any of the uh, so it's, it's kinda where it is.
Okay. That's all I have.
Hey, thanks. Go around, start with Ben.
I'm a little confused here. It says the proposed outdoor seating area is six hundred and fifty-two square feet. The ZBA approval was six hundred and twenty-five square feet.
That was, it's, it's for the six hundred and twenty-five, that was a typo on, on my part. The two hundred, uh, six hundred and fifty-two, it's supposed to be two hundred, or six hundred and twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yeah, and I corrected that on the plans.
Just a typo, okay.
Yes.
And uh, I think it was the fire department that was looking for some type of barlards or something between the parking lot and the building.
We were proposing um, concrete wheel stops, um, which he was not a fan of, so what we did to revise the plan, uh, to provide a wooden timber barrier along here, along the building, and then uh, additional boulders in the back for the seating area. Which originally he made a comment about the boulders, um, it wasn't the, the size or using the boulders, it was actually the spacing of the boulders. So there's gonna be some additional um, boulders that are to be put in there.
Okay.
To prevent any, any traffic going in there.
Okay, and in the outdoor patio area, there's no cooking out there, right? It's all done in the building?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And uh, the bocce court. No alcohol will be served in that area, right?
No.
Okay. That's it, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Ben. Move to Peter.
There's a letter from Captain Finn from the fire department dated April twenty-ninth that addresses wheel stops, guard posts and other barriers. Have you had an opportunity to respond to that letter?
I revise the plans. I haven't submitted it back to Captain Finn.
Could you copy us on, on your response?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Nicole?
So a couple of the questions have already been answered. The septic system keeps coming up. Is that? Andy? The septic system, is that, is that something that's gonna become? Is that, Andy, the septic system, is that, is that something that's gonna become a problem?
Well, um, it's, it's really in the health department's hands, it's not really in our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Um, as long as there's adequate, adequate cover over the, over the laterals, putting it in the parking area should be okay.
Is it...
As far as size is concerned, I'm not sure what this, what it's been sized for.
Right.
Um, and we'd have to defer to the health department on that.
We're working with the health department for the appropriate...
Are you? Okay, all right. Um, all right, as far as the bocce court is concerned, will there be any lights put up for the bocce court, or is it going to be that?
No, not this time.
Bocce is just gonna be played during the daytime, and then, at night, there's not gonna be any... May I?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
The bocce court was an idea.
Right.
Because I had, I saw Cosmo's, and I thought, this is great, I'm Italian, I love bocce.
Right.
I would've put croquet, except no one plays that. And so, I think the bocce court is just going to be where I plant my yearly Christmas trees that we keep inside and then plant in spring. I don't think we're gonna do the bocce court, I think we're striking that.
Right, you are.
Yeah, I just, personally, it's just, there will be no alcohol served where there's hard balls plain played, and I just don't know if we have enough interest, and my friends at Cosmo kinda have the, that down, so I think we're just not gonna bother.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, the shed, that's for mowing equipment?
We have a small lawnmower that, right now, we put in the back of my truck and drive home, and unload, and then drive it back, so we just wanted to put that there, and then the rakes, because, uh, you know, we, I like to keep it really clean and neat, and it's just a schlepping of the equipment. I have no real place outside to store it.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, that's it, thanks.
Hey, Rocco?
Uh, just a couple of quick, uh, things. What is the size of the proposed shed? I'm not sure it was clear.
Ten by twelve.
Ten by twelve, okay. And around the seating area, would there be any screening, or is that going to be open? The outdoor screen, uh, the outdoor seating area?
Right now, there's a, a stockade fence that runs along the, the southern property line, and then, around the actual area itself, there's a, a three-foot-high picket fence.
You mean like a lanai? No, we don't plan to enclose it or screen it.
No, I don't mean screen, I mean, uh, yeah, some type of, of, uh, barrier between the, the street and there.
There is.
The fence.
Rocks and a fence.
Rocks and a fence.
Boulders and a fence.
Right, and that, uh, all around it, or just on that one side?
On all sides.
On all sides.
Why not, there's part of the fence.
No, there's fence that goes all the way around.
Now, there's a, a stockade fence that goes along the property line, and then, around where the, the patio area is, there, it's enclosed with a, um, three-foot-high, like, picket fence. Um, there's gonna be some, some boulders over here, and I believe there's some landscaping that's along here.
But the fence...
From, between, between this and the parking lot.
But the fence completely encloses the area, because I allow children to go back there, and dogs on leash, and I don't want anybody going into the three-seventy-six, so it's completely fenced with a gate, two gates, actually.
Okay. And the whole outdoor area will be paved, some, the whole outside, the dining area?
It's, dining area has stones, uh, what are those called? Patio box?
Yeah, pavers. It's actually gonna be the pavers.
And the other area is just grass and flowers.
And that's all included in the six-twenty-five?
The six-twenty-five is the actual paved, uh, uh, concrete pavers area. The other grass area is not inclusive, inclusive of that six-hundred-and-twenty-five feet.
Right.
Cause that's not, that's not, um, uh, dine, a dining area.
All right.
The dining area's gonna be limited to the, the pavers.
And what's that, the total area to the side, then?
Uh, right now, it's... It's, um, slightly bigger than the six-hundred-and-twenty-five. Uh, what we're proposing is to delineate the spaces with, uh, planters, so it actually reduce that size, um, and it's, uh, there's a service area, and then, there's the actual dining area. Um, the combination of the two is the six-hundred, six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet.
Wait, say that again? The, the dining area and what else comprises the six-twenty-five?
There's this, this area here, and then, there's also this area, which is a service station.
Okay.
Nappies, and, and the combined total of those two are, is the six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet.
The gray area, yep.
All right, the gray area.
Yes.
I have a photograph if I...
The other area is bigger than the six-twenty-five, unless I'm reading this wrong. I mean, it, it's gonna be larger than six hundred and...
It is, we're gonna provide planters and, and other barriers, so that we delineate what that, that actual space is.
Okay. All right, nothing else at this time?
All right, Bob?
Do you have regular or permanent outdoor seating now?
Permanent outdoor seating?
Yeah. Do you have outdoor seating at all that you use from time to time? Is there no outdoor seating at this point?
There is out, there is, uh, used now for outdoor seating. Um, we're in front of the board to bring it up to the site plan approval.
So, um, with the additional space with outdoor seating, do you envision any additional parking requirements that aren't gonna fit in, in the current space?
No, we don't see any problem with parking.
May I, may I show you something?
The, the, where, the area that we're proposing now is existing, and it's used as outdoor seating.
I'm gonna just show...
But there wasn't a site plan approval for that, so we're in front of the board now to get site plan approval for it.
That's what it looks like. I can show you closer.
That's the six-twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pave, pavers with the tables on it, and then, there's landscaping on the other side.
So, it looks better in color, paper.
Yeah.
So, that's the six-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, and this is all grass, which was dirt, and then, that's it. In the back, it's just dirt, you know, sand.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anyone else wanna see it?
Thanks for showing that, the pictures always help to visualize the space.
So, are there occasions where you're, like, busy times where parking overflows, and they park on, alongside the road?
No, there's parking, um, the gravel parking area now is used for every day-to-day, um, operations. If there is a special event, there is available, uh, parking that's in the grass area for an overflow, but there's no parking on the street.
We have had, um, several permitted events where a couple of overly enthusiastic patrons had to get in and parked along the road, and we called the police, and their cars were removed.
Okay. So, with, with the, uh, just me, popular use for the outdoor seating, you don't see any issue with the space you currently have for parking being insufficient?
No, it should be sufficient, it will be sufficient for the part, the outdoor...
We have fifty-seven spaces approximately, as I've measured it, cause we had the autism attack, we kind of spaced it, and then, there's another at least thirty-five spaces on the grass.
Okay.
Nothing else?
All right, thanks, yeah, the parking seems, uh, sufficient per code, um, but you'd have to, uh, as, as been brought up a few times, you have quite a few things to look over still, the protection, the, you know, deciding on the additional rocks or barards and whatnot, and if you did, if you do wind up doing the bocce court, do you wanna put additional boulders in the back there, too, cause there's enough space between some of them for...
Yeah, we're getting rid of the bocce court.
The bocce court is, it was a great idea, but no.
Will you be removing that, then, for the revised, uh, plan, sir?
Okay. That resolves some of the other questions of additional noise and, and light for, cause that, there's some issues, but, from some of the neighbors, so...
Carl? The, uh, grass area for parking, is that your property, or is...
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. It's for liability?
Yes, sir, it's all insured.
Okay. I think we're good, then, to, for motion.
I move that the planning board defer action on the application pending the applicant's response to comments of the planning board and those received from the town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of the following...
Second.
Moved and deferred. Call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Are we, the June meeting will be out for the public hearing?
Um, well, depends on your schedule. Depends on when you can get this.
Okay.
The middle for the June meeting is when?
It's, uh, not next week, but following week?
Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, right after Memorial Day.
Would you be available between now and then to meet?
Uh, I'd give you a call, we'll try and get it in the schedule.
Okay. I feel, I mean, if we meet, I think there's plenty of time to address all the problems, or all the conditions in here, uh, enough to get a public hearing for that.
Okay, taking out the bocce court helps quite a bit, and, and you've already been addressing some of the protection issues. I, I see you're recovered from it, you don't want another car coming through the wall.
No, fascinatingly enough, um, normally, if it were, had been a half an hour sooner, there would've been cars there, and he wouldn't have been in the building. It was just...
Is that somebody just went off the road?
No, sir, it was a young man who went to my parking lot and parked at the far end, and stayed there for a long time, and then, injected heroin while he was in the car, and then, actually, I believe, tried to commit suicide by driving into the building.
Ouch. Not a good situation.
No. He didn't make it in, though, so.
Mm-hmm.
The, the building is actually higher than the sidewalk, so...
Okay.
It stopped him.
But there was a little, some damage there.
Oh, yeah, a lot.
All right, so, putting the extra boulders or what, what there, uh, will help.
Yep.
Make sure that doesn't happen again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Remind you also, we'll be looking at additional, there's some additional comments from the neighbors, as, in the letter that was submitted. All right, next up is Shady Brook Trailer Park Seeker Recirculation Revised Site Plan and Special Use Permit Review for improvements to an existing mobile home park, including connection to municipal sewer and a final configuration of sixty homes in performance with the town mobile home park design standards. That sixty-seven old Manchester Road, Zoned RMH District, and negative declaration and resolutions of conditional site plan approval and special use permit approval were adopted August twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen, and reapproved February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Welcome?
Uh, it's good to be back. Hello, everybody. Um, maybe just start with a, a real quick update. Um, when we were in front of you in February, um, the applicant, new owner, Mr. Scott, Charlie Scott, um, gave you guys a little bit of an overview of some of the modifications he was, uh, proposing to the park, some of the upgrades, I would say, um, that would enhance it from the, from the prior, um, the prior plan that was approved back in August of two thousand seventeen. Um, those are what we're showing on the plan, there's actually been a few additional improvements, so if, if I could indulge you just for a couple minutes, I'll, I'll run through, uh, the ones that you did here, and the one, and the new ones as well. Um, we have, um, shown some grading on these plans to elevate the units, um, rather than just having them, um, elevated mechanically and, uh, skirting them in order to reduce the skirting, really to increase the aesthetics of the site. Um, Andy does have some comments on that, we'll, we'll review them with him, um, but we feel that that's gonna make the, the site much more attractive. Um, it was one of the comments in the, uh, in the, uh, prior application was that the, the units were gonna be very high, and, and Charlie's, uh, proposing to mitigate that. Um, the new plan shows that all the existing overhead electric and communication wiring is going to be removed, everything's going to be placed underground. Um, in addition, all of the existing oil tanks and propane tanks will be removed, and natural gas service will be brought in, and that will address also some of the concerns relative to, uh, flooding issues to the site, securing those tanks, and, and, uh, the potential contamination that might be associated with that. Um, we are, as we mentioned, I think at the last meeting, we are no longer proposing onsite sewage disposal, we're proposing to connect to the Hemmon Boulevard Station. This submission includes preliminary designs for that, that will be submitted to the health department as well. Um, and that pretty much covers what you've heard already. A couple of the new improvements are, upon investigation and starting to, uh, initiate some of the, uh, removal of some of the units, um, Charlie noticed that the, the existing trees there are in, uh, not, not such great shape, actually in poor condition, and I, um, are a safety hazard, so he's proposing to remove the existing vegetation. If you remember, with our last approval, we were proposing to maintain the few trees that were there as our landscaping plan, so the proposal is to remove the trees, and we've actually submitted a landscaping plan, and that's what you have in front of you. Um, the, the red, the red circles that you see represent proposed trees, um, the, the larger trees are, um, are a Hawthorne, and the smaller trees around the perimeter are a flowering pear. And one other improvement that we've, we've been able to accomplish is the prior, the prior layout, um, had these two rows of units, um, at an angle, and the reason they were at an angle is because the former layout, prior to us presenting to you, actually had two units in each of those rows, and that's why there was a road in between, because they needed access to that second row of, of units.
Mm-hmm.
Since that, that row has been eliminated, it allowed us to eliminate that, that roadway there. It wasn't required for circulation, the only reason it was required was for access to that additional, two rows of units, which are now gone, and now, we're proposing some, uh, some crab apples in that area, too, the crab apples being off the road, so, you know, any, any fruit that, uh, that falls is not gonna be an issue for the roadways. Um, that also helps us with our stormwater calculations, we're, we're, we've got some significant, and, reduction in impervious area, um, and again, Andy and I have a meeting for tomorrow morning, we're gonna go over all of Andy's comments, and, and, um, I'm confident that we can address them. Um, there's one other thing that, that, uh, that Charlie noticed, too, in your code that we're asking for a formal waiver on, and that is the, the shed, um, shed requirements. The code currently says that the wall height is limited to six feet, and, uh, Charlie's investigation, um, shows that the typically available units have a, um, a wall height of seven, seven-point-five feet, so we're asking that that additional one and a half foot of, uh, wall height be considered in, um, in this application as well. And I think that is pretty much a, a summary of where we are. Um, we think it's a much, a much more improved plan than you approved in August of two, two thousand seventeen. Um, it's pretty consistent with what we told you we were gonna do in February. All right, with the exception of, uh, the elimination of the road in the landscaping plan. Oh, and we've, we're proposing, uh, street lighting as well. Um, and that is not on this plan, I don't know if you care to, to see it, um, you've got a bunch of other items on the agenda, but, uh, it's, it's decorative, uh, in nature, it's, uh, colonial, um, we're not, it's not Central Hudson lighting. The only light that's there now, I believe, is Central Hudson Rentals, the shoebox on top of wooden poles, and again, since we're eliminating all that, what little lighting's there is going, but we're proposing some, some aesthetic, um, lighting around the site, which does conform to your lighting standards, to your lighting code.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks, Larry. Um, Eric?
Uh, the, the, this amended application, um, just by way of reminder for the board, the, um, the current application is, is valid, um, so this will be amending the previous conditionally-approved layout, uh, it hasn't yet been signed, so it's, it's a continuation of the application that's on file. Um, that said, it is, it has some substantial differences, uh, including the proposed connection to town sewer and the revised layout, and the change in the landscaping, the lighting, so, uh, there's a requirement under Seeker for the board to notify all of the other agents, involved agencies of the change, and to provide them with an opportunity to comment. So, that's the action that's on your agenda for tonight, is to...
Yep.
Um, is to, as lead agency, circulate, uh, the current, the current amended application, um, and then, to defer action to give those agencies an opportunity to respond. Uh, that said, we, we have some comments in, uh, in the review, um, I, I think staff tended to find that the layout actually eliminated a lot of concerns and problems from before, um, and may have even alleviated some of the conditions in the prior approval, which will hopefully make the next, uh, another resolution much easier to craft, um, so we'll, and we'll await, uh, further plans and circulation for that.
All right, thanks, Eric. Alright, thanks Eric. Let me go, I think through the flood zone and everything. I think we may have some comments from Andy here.
Yeah, you know Larry touched on most of our comments already. But you know, as everybody I think is already aware, this, being that this project is in the flood zone, it creates some challenges, obviously with, you know, raising the structures themselves. But also now that they are proposing to connect to the town sewer system, it's going to be important for us to make sure that that's protected from flooding as well. So that's something that Larry and I will have to work through to make sure that that's good to go. You know, I'm not going to go through every comment, but there's definitely some things that we can work through. We'll work together to get it to a place that we're all comfortable. Something that's a little bit unique in this situation, as far as the stormwater is concerned, is that it is kind of a bowl. They're proposing an infiltration area at the lower side, where they do have decent infiltration rates. But they are talking about pumping stormwater, which is a little unusual. So we'll have to go through that on, you know, at this, and during the extreme events, we'll have to look at that and see how we're going to work through that, so.
Okay. Yeah, but I think the sewer will, sewer's just different than the septic. Flooding is terrible too, so.
Yeah.
Make sure it connects. Does that be a force main that needs?
Yes.
Put in?
Yes.
Alright, thanks. Let's go around, start with Bob.
So you've got, all this addresses, you had flooding issues in the past, right? Big storms?
So, I'm glad you brought that up and I'm glad you asked me that, because I didn't want to continue to, just to interject here. The stormwater modeling does not show any need for any pumping. If you go out to the site during any of the rainfalls, there's never an accumulation of water out there. And we are reducing the impervious, so it should only be getting better. However, we all have seen photos of four and a half feet of water in the park. I'm not sure where that came from. From descriptions that I've been able to garnish, you know, there may have been a breach of the berm, not on this property. Never overtopped the berm on this property. But my understanding is it came across Old Manchester Road. So in that regard, what we are proposing, we're not anticipating the site to ever flood. But apparently it had, so we want to provide some protection. We're proposing a portable flood pump that will be maintained on site. And we're proposing provisions within the site to serve as a wet well. Should water begin to build, then we can evacuate up and over the berm. I'm not sure, and Andy, this is one of the things Andy and I will work through. I'm not sure that that qualifies as stormwater pumping as much as it does as flood protection. So we'll go through that and we'll figure that out. But one way or the other, we'll get it resolved. I don't know, did I answer your question?
Yeah. But if you go back, I don't remember how many years, but we had Hurricane Irene and Sandy came through. Was there flooding in the park during those?
There was not. There was not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember. It was a few years ago?
Ever since I have been involved with this project, there has not been any flooding there. And we've been out there during the wet seasons doing soil tests to even just find out where the groundwater level is. So we have not seen any accumulation of water on the site, except in the photos.
Okay.
Okay.
Rocco?
Nothing new.
Nicole?
It's great to hear that you're removing all of the mobile homes, especially because of the way that they look right now. They're just deteriorating. Everything I hear sounds really great. The lighting, great. We need to see it on the plans. Street names, do you have any street names yet? Because we're going to need those.
Okay, no, I haven't considered that.
Okay.
But we shall.
Yeah. And other than that, I think everything that's already been discussed is some of the things that I wanted to ask, so thank you.
That's Ben.
I'm glad to see a lot of progress being made here. I think the natural gas is great improvement. You don't have to have oil tanks. I don't think, mobile homes, I don't think are below ground anyhow. But still, it's a hazard. The shed thing, the additional height, isn't there, is there an overall height of the shed limit? And would the raising the sides affect the pitch of the roof? Or would it have to be a flat roof on an angle or? Talk to me about that a little bit.
Sure. I don't know if it's a town code requirement, but in the conditions attached to the previous site plan approval, there was a limitation of six-foot sidewall heights on any storage shed. And each mobile home unit will have a dedicated storage shed. And in this instance, all 60 of them will have a new dedicated storage shed. The town law requirement is a maximum of 96 square feet, so these will either be eight by tens or eight by twelves. But the quality sheds that are available today have a, you know, the stud is six feet 30 inches, excuse me, four feet 30, six and a half feet. And you have a single plate on the bottom, a double plate on the top. So it comes out to about seven feet four, seven feet five inches. The sheds with six-feet wall heights are what you would recognize as like a barn or gambrel roof shed, because they have low sidewalls. But then you have a very high, you know, pitched roof, as you've seen on many, you know, farm barns. I don't consider that to be the most attractive design for sheds, so I'd like to go with really the best that's available in the market today, which requires a seven-foot-six sidewall. The pitch of the roof is the same. It's about a three-on-twelve or a four-on-twelve pitch. So the roof pitch isn't any greater. In fact, you have a much steeper pitched roof with a gambrel or Dutch roof barn. And that compensates for the lower sidewall height.
Will the sheds be located on each lot?
Yes.
So the restriction in the height comes in, it's not so much a restriction in the height of the shed, but it's if you want to put it closer to the lot line, then you need the shorter shed. So that's where it comes from, from the town code. But Lizette, our zoning administrator, will advise, weigh in on that one way or the other.
Might be helpful too, to have some pictures of what they would look like.
Sure.
Right, so we have a better sense of what we're talking about.
And in addition to the pictures, it would be helpful if it was a standard distance from a lot line that you were looking for, for them. Because that affects the height that's allowed.
Alright, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks Lisa.
Thank you.
I'm a big fan of adaptive reuse. This is a very challenging site, as you know. Looking forward to your next submission, see how things start to filter out.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll just add, one item that I heard from a prior discussion of the board was just some of the details in the staff comments. If you could also just address the proposed disposition of sheds, additions and any other structures within the individual lots. One of the board members had asked about that at an offline meeting.
Okay, clarify, just say that in different words.
Want to see where they're going to be?
Well, I just want to know, no, I think they're looking for notations on, how much, what restrictions or guidelines will there be for the placement of sheds or other things within the setbacks, within the lot setbacks? Okay.
Well, I mean, will people be building decks onto their house or that kind of thing?
Okay, gotcha.
Decks, sheds, other structure, anything people might build. Because that was also the origin of a lot of problems and headaches for the building department in the existing building park. So I think they just want to understand what the intention was.
Okay, I think that's actually one of Wayne's comments that we'll be addressing too. He described the decks, but the stairs are allowed within the five-foot, or the required setback, but a deck is not. So we'll definitely be addressing that, okay.
I actually had this conversation with Wayne early on in the process. And there will be no attached decks or disattached decks. What we are going to do is provide outdoor living area in the form of paving stone type patios. And those are, there are no restrictions apparently on those.
Okay, yeah, because they're not a structure.
Yes.
Thanks. Yeah, I also want to praise you for taking on this and fixing this up and getting the gas and sewer and underground utility. That's going to be a big improvement in the area. I was curious, you know, were you bringing in all new homes or just, or mixed? And how new would they be?
We're going to bring in as many new homes as we are able to. And we're going to work to the extent that we can with some of the residents to perhaps accommodate them with new homes. The problem with the homes that, as they presently exist, and this is based on conversations I've had with the building department, is that it might not be possible to bring any of them up to code, particularly since they have to be elevated above the base flood elevation, two feet above the BFE. And without an engineer's inspection and material from the home manufacturer, and we're talking about homes that are built and manufactured in the 60s and 70s, it wouldn't be possible to do that. So that's one of the things that has to be worked through. So the plan is to cite as many new homes as we are able to in the park.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of those that are in there now that had been falling apart won't even comply with current code is part of the issue, so.
It's, and that's one of the reasons why we need to, we feel the need to take out these large trees. They are ancient and there's something to be said for that. But the limbs on these trees are massive. They were never properly maintained, you know, groomed, trimmed, what have you. If any one of those limbs came down, it would cut a trailer in half. It's, you know, it is a risk to the life of anyone living there, I think. And frankly, I wouldn't want to live in a mobile home, you know, underneath, you know, the spreading branches of one of these massive trees. So I just think that needs to be done. It's just a real safety hazard.
Okay, that was one of my next questions, because it's, hate to see mature trees go by the wayside. You have to be careful of the, when you're cutting them for Indiana bats. But if that's your plan, let's see. Guess that's all I have right now then.
I move that the planning board, as lead agency, authorize the planning department circulation of a notice of the action as revised, together with a copy of the revised EAF and a copy of the revised application to all new and previously involved agencies.
Second? Moved and seconded for lead agency. Call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on the application, pending on opportunity for involved agencies to comment on the revised application and that the planning board direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and other agencies. Said responses to reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following, one through 13.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. Call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
I do have a question. Eric and I spoke on the telephone a couple, a week or so ago, just about the procedures to make sure that we're kind of on the same page with the planning department and the planning board with how this moves forward, since it's an existing approval. We're wondering, is there a site plan or is there a public hearing again required for this project or?
I think, I'm not sure that we'd come up with an answer. I think we'll have to, let's talk about that, because it's an amended review, it's an amended plan.
Right, the answer is if it's for a special use permit, it's required. But if it's an amended special use permit, it may not be required. So we're still, we're looking at it.
Okay. Is there any potential that if, that we could have that conversation? And if it's necessary, we could schedule it for the next meeting?
It doesn't have to be scheduled in advance by the planning board. We can consult and make a determination.
Okay.
So the answer is yes.
Okay, great, great. I know you're as anxious as the applicant is to see this thing get moving, but he's pressing me to get moving, so, and I'm happy about that. I'm good with that. So if we can get this thing moving, we will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Some good progress, Keith. See you next time.
See you next time.
Alright, next up is Fox Run at Fulton, also known as Fairview Commons. For lead agency intent rezoning recommendation to the town board and amended site plan review to modify Phase Two of a previously approved site plan for construction of 151 unit apartment complex and 8,500 square foot support space in three buildings. Proposed Building A is to be modified from 34,000 to 70,000 square feet with additional parking and with the addition of three adjacent parcels subject to rezoning. Negative declaration was adopted August 21, 2014. Amended Phase Two site plan approval issued June 15, 2017.
Good evening. Thank you. Again, Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates. I was planning on being pretty brief tonight. I think everyone will be happy with that, because the sun is finally out. I was before you, I think it was two months ago, where we had sought a similar approval on this property just to extend the site plan and preserve the site plan approval for Building A. And at that time, I told you we were going to be coming back in for a modification to that approval. Subsequent to that meeting, we did have a meeting with the Town Poughkeepsie Town Board regarding the same subject property and had reviewed the application with them for a request for a rezone. And had anticipated, it was just, it's sort of Murphy's Law, that the town board meeting was last night. And we were hoping that the town board meeting was last night and then we were going to be before you tonight for the referral. But it didn't happen that way. So we're staying with you, but we're a week ahead of the town board meeting. So I'm going to be brief. We are anticipating providing you with, obviously, a more detailed application addressing a lot of the concerns that were raised in the planning department's memo. What we're seeking is a modification to the site plan approval for the third building that was previously approved by this board. And so it's an expansion of the building, it's a larger building. But with that came also the acquisition of additional properties. So with your request, or with your approval, sorry, I would like to just inform you that we're here tonight simply to refer this action, or for the planning board to declare this action under Seeker and declare your intent to be lead agent and circulate for Seeker. And between now and the next meeting, we'll certainly work with you to advance some of the questions that you had. I do think it's a fairly, you know, I say this loosely, a de minimis application, because when we're looking at this project, we're really looking at the difference between what was previously approved and what we're proposing. And I really want to lay that out clearly for you in the application, so we can discuss just those delta issues. We'd also like to meet with Eric and Andy in between, so maybe we can address some of their issues and get those on the plans before the next meeting.
Sounds good. Alright, Eric?
Kelly said it, we're recommending that you circulate for lead agency.
Alright.
There is a, will be a rezoning recommendation of the town board. There is, just to correct the record, there's, the review also anticipated a town board referral, which is going to come later. So the dates were for, the dates anticipated for the timing of that referral and the recommendation are off. And it'll be whatever it is when we get that referral.
Alright, thanks Eric. As we'll go to, anything?
I have very little. I just, just a couple of things I would ask the EAF to make sure we're showing that, like Kelly said, the deltas, you know, what's changing in terms of flow rates for water and sewer. That's the main thing that I was interested in on that.
So in the EAF, just list the delta, not?
Well, I'd like to see what the total is and then the change from previous. It's just helpful.
Okay. Did everyone get that long table that I had provided? I wasn't sure if that was in. Okay, so we'll elaborate on that and make sure that that addresses those. Okay.
That's all I have.
Alright, thanks Andy. Nicole, start with you.
Sure. So I just had a couple of things here. The water department, the last time the backflow was done was 2016. So they're looking for that.
We actually, we did forward the updated certifications to the town. What had happened was, yeah, they've been inspected and the inspection company was sending them to the management company. The management company wasn't sending them to the town. So I know Carol's out, but I sent them to the town. Keith did receive them. So we are up to speed. And I said, from now on, the inspection company is sending it to the management company, to us and the town. So they have been inspected.
Great. And then also, I just had, I saw that the fire department had a lot of requests. Did you see all that?
I did.
So I just wanted to make sure that you saw that. There was a lot. There was a long list of things there that they were looking for. Specifically, you know, numbering of buildings and stuff like that, just for emergency purposes, so.
We actually, just to respond out very quickly, we work very closely with the fire department. I was hoping that they were here tonight, but we'll try to get them to the next meeting. The chief and I communicate often. Anytime there's incidences, which are very few at this facility, I know about it. I think we've gone to great lengths to provide a good numbering scheme for the, not only the buildings, but for all of the units. But we'll meet with them to go through that as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I know from some recent fire discussions for our master plan, they have some issues sometimes of where the connections on the buildings are located, so make sure to work through those details.
Yes, yes. Chief Mader already called me about that, so we'll coordinate with him on this one as well.
That it?
Yeah, that was it, thanks.
Rocco? Not at this time. Bob?
Nothing for me.
Ben?
Pass.
And Peter. All right, it's, looks like pretty straightforward. It'd be good to remove some more industrial use from that area near the college and provide more housing, I guess most, you know, get some new graduate students.
Yes, we are going to have, a part of this building will be a graduate tower as well. Okay.
And the parking count is sufficient for?
We're actually, I think we're overparked, but we'll provide, I just did the total calculation. There was a criteria in the original approval that we had to meet, so we currently exceed that. And I think we'll continue to exceed that when we provide that information for you.
All right, good.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the EAF, and a copy of the application to the identified involved agencies.
Second.
Moved in second, and I call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on Seeker review, a rezoning recommendation and site plan review pending establishment of a lead agency, and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and other agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness, including but not limited to the following, 1 through 10.
Second.
Moved in second to defer. Call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
Good luck, Kelly.
We'll be back in another month or two.
See you next time.
Yes. I'm going to switch hats here real quick.
Don't go anywhere.
Yep.
Dahlia, reappraisal of a site plan application for four senior housing and two mixed-use buildings totaling 84 dwelling units and 10,000 square feet commercial, non-residential. Sophie's Way and Violet Avenue lots, zoned R20 residential single family and shod senior housing overly disparate. Plan was reapprived last on December 14th, 2017.
Correct. We're here, I think you kind of summed it up, we're here, the board, the town board actually, a year or two ago, developed a new section of their code wherein an applicant is unable to secure a building permit, that the applicant is able to reapprove the project. And we're here to seek that reappraisal this evening. The applicant has not been able to seek a building permit. And so we're asking that you reapprove the same project, and we provided you with the signed drawings for your file.
So nothing's changing?
Correct.
Straightforward. Eric, anything further comments?
Briefly, yeah, we're recommending the board go through the procedures to reapprove the plans. I did come, in looking back, I did come across something just the other day in clarifying some of the project requirements. There were two items on the record, which I think I mentioned to you, Kelly. One of them, there was a notation, recreation fees, which are typically collected at this time of site plan approval, were deferred to, at the applicant's request, to be collected at the time of the building permit instead. And secondly, there was, there was a big rush to sign the plans, and in June of 2016, there was an agreement to address several items mostly related to landscaping, which was important during the project review, to address those miscellaneous things on sizes and placements and numbers, to address those as field changes prior to commencement of activity. So we would just ask that those two items be added to the list of conditions, since I have discovered them by accident when looking back to 2006.
Okay.
So basically, one is the, is that a condition related to the payment of recreation fees at the time of building permit, and second, the June 20th remaining items of approval prior to site activity or building permit.
Eric, would it be okay if we submit a new cover sheet that references the prior approval and then adds those additional notes that are the conditions of this approval, and then attach that to the cover sheet that you already signed? And then that would be the new set?
We, actually, would, I did this this way, so that we wouldn't, you gave us signed plans, and we expected to just have the chairman re-sign them. Making this a condition of the board tonight would avoid the need to change the plans at all.
Very good, perfect, okay.
It'll preserve those items in the record without having to redo plans.
Perfect, okay, that's even better.
Okay, just want to clarify.
That was rec fees and then landscaping?
Rec fees and post-approval conditions.
Post-approval.
Post-approval conditions, okay, which included some landscaping and some other things.
Okay.
They were in a, they were in an email and a memo dated June 20th, 2016.
June 20th, 2016. All right, let's go around the board, see if anybody has any issues. I don't think you.
Nothing for me.
Wait, Rocco? I'm good. Andy, did you have something?
Good, okay. I'm good.
Bob, nothing?
No, nothing.
Ben, Peter?
Next time.
Yeah, I mean, same plan as before, so.
Yes.
Other than the additional conditions, I think we're to reapprove.
I move that the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code 210-151D, because the site plan proposed for reapproval is presently valid and in effect, was previously subject to a public hearing on March 17th, 2016.
Moved in second, and call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board, as lead agency, hereby reaffirms a Dahlia senior housing determination of nonsignificance negative declaration dated December 14th, 2017, because it is presently valid and in effect, and the board's review indicates the current site and neighborhood conditions remain substantially unchanged.
Second.
Moved in second for lead agency. Call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Go ahead.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan reapproval for the Dahlia Senior Housing Project Site Plan incorporating by reference the attached resolution of conditional site plan reapproval in the matter of Dahlia Senior Housing Facility as previously adopted on December 14th, 2017, and additionally subject to the following, 1 through 3D.
Plus the four.
Okay, plus, I'm sorry, excuse me. Also, four rec fees and five post-approval conditions of a June 20th, 2016 memo.
Second.
Moved in second, call to question. Who's, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board reissue architectural approval for the Dahlia Senior Housing Project as depicted on the plan set dated November 24th, 2014, and last revised on March 25th, 2016.
Second.
Moved in second for architecture. Call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. You too.
Next up, we got 110 Grill, Poughkeepsie Galleria. Site plan and architectural review for proposed changes to exterior facade, entrance and patio renovations for the former melting pot location at the Poughkeepsie Galleria, 2001 South Road, zoned BSC Business Shopping Center. It's a type II action, Poughkeepsie Galleria LLC owner. Welcome, guys.
Good evening, I'm Rich Tompkins, Maury Architects.
Robert Walker, I'm the owner of the 110 Grill.
So we're here this evening to review the proposed exterior changes, which is the former melting pot, which is on the east side of the Galleria Mall. It is near the mall entrance, near Macy's. Basically, the exterior renovations include a small addition for the relocation and reconfiguration of the entrance, the exterior entrance, to increase the handicap accessibility. And then it's really just exterior renovations to upgrade the facade to match the 110 Grill facade prototype, I should say. There is an increase on the exterior patio from about 540 square feet to 780 square feet roughly, with some new landscaping. There's going to be brick piers that have electric lights and gas lanterns, and then there'll also be some planters between those brick piers with seasonal color. They'll change out annual plantings. And there is also a, what they call a service corral. I think there were some questions that were circulating whether that was going to have a roof or not. That is just strictly fencing to kind of shield the service entrance from any of the patrons on the patio. The patio will just be colored concrete with a brush finish. And I think there was also some question on whether or not there would be some seating. I provided Eric with an additional plan this morning. I do have printed copies if we need those as well. So there's roughly, I believe it's about 26 seats that are seated at tables, and then there is some grouping of just exterior patio furniture and other seating, for a total, I think, about 34 to 36 roughly. The other patio furniture is around a fire pit that is, that is proposed.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Eric?
You just have a revised recommendation that goes through the steps for, the staff are recommending that the board consider site plan and, site plan approval for the application with respect to the outdoor dining area and also for architectural review. Couple of brief conditions for clarification, some of which you've addressed already. And I mentioned we're going to have, if the board moves on to architecture, before they move a resolution, you might want to, they may want to see that and talk with you about it. But see what they have to say first.
All right. Let's see, any engineering issues on this one?
No, not really. I will clarify that the last comment on our, on our memo about seating and tables, I think we were more, a better way to word it would have been to show seating and tables if that was proposed. So we don't have any issue with seating on the patio, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Let's go around, start with Peter this time.
Looks fine. Buck? Thank you.
Ben?
Looks good, I like it. Except, I have a question about, once you're out there on the patio, the only way out is to go back into the building, you can't go out. Why is that?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's our operational control, so we don't like people to come in and out of the patio. We want them to go in and out of the main entrance.
So just, you have a fence there on the right side. Could that be a one-way gate? I mean, in case of emergency or something like that for people to get out, or?
I suppose it could, you know, we, again, the purpose is to make sure that people don't go out that gate, so if we were to have it, quite honestly, we would keep it in a position where someone couldn't exit.
Okay.
We have this typically at all our restaurants, we haven't had any issue with it. And, you know, particularly while we're serving alcohol, we like to make sure that we control the patrons and who comes in and who comes out.
Okay. All right.
Makes sense, as long as the fire department is okay with that for evacuation.
And we have shown that through our building permit process, the ADA access and also the means of egress in it, we have a full building permit with the exception of this outside work right now.
Okay, thanks. Anything further, Ben?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Nicole?
Did you provide the construction details for the new concrete patio on your plans?
They're currently not, there is no detail for that, but we can modify it to include that.
Yeah, if you could do that.
Sure.
That was the only thing as far as this was concerned. I did a little research on your restaurant, and I am very happy to hear that you're coming here, because you're very allergy-friendly, right? And we have a ton of allergy people in this area, gluten-free, dairy-free, nut-free, soy-free, you name it. So I was very excited to hear that you guys are coming, because I am personally gluten-free and dairy-free, and sometimes I have problems going to restaurants, so.
Thank you, and we take great pride in that. And just a little side note, that we were voted the fifth largest restaurant on allergy awareness in the entire country about two months ago. So once we open this, we'll be number one, so.
Awesome.
That's our goal.
Very good, thanks.
Okay. Question here. I noticed that on page two of the handout here, or page one, but it shows the current melting pot with the beige superstructure of the mall with the Sears sign, and then beside it, it shows the proposed, are you going to repaint that whole area of the mall? That's what it looks like here, unless, unless that's.
I don't think that there's any plans for that. The mall is going to remain the same.
Okay, and the Sears sign will stay and everything else, or is that coming down also?
No, that would stay, that's just a rendition, so.
Okay.
Trying to match the color as best as possible.
I'm just looking sure, because I kind of like it.
You're too much.
I'm not open, okay, no, I'm fine, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bob?
I don't have any questions, just about the plan, but for those of us who, at the present time, don't have any allergies, do you still have food that we?
Yes, we do, so.
And I assume you have a liquor license that covers the outdoor seating area as well?
Yes, yes.
Let's see. The only thing I had from an architectural standpoint is, you know, you're removing the canopy that's over the door, that kind of is weather protection. It looks like nothing, but.
So that whole entrance actually gets configured, there's a small addition that gets put on basically between where the existing melting pot entrance door is and the canopy for the mall entrance. So you, I'm not sure if you can see it on a small copy, but there is a dotted line where you see the sign for the 110 Grill that's over top of the doors. That is a curved sort of canopy that is over the two doors, the one entrance door and the exit door out onto the.
So it is, it is covered then?
So the entrance door is partially covered by that.
Yep, and it's a vestibule as well going in.
There is a vestibule, yes.
You get to pop your umbrella or whatever. Okay, thanks, looking good. Good to reuse the existing place and welcome to the town.
I move that the planning board acknowledge the submitted planning board application for architectural approval as also an application for site plan approval and waive additional information required for site plan review, except as required by action of the planning board.
Second.
Moved in second, and call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the application meets the criteria for a seeker type II action pursuant to seeker part 617.5, and no further environmental review is required.
Second.
Moved in second, and call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
I move that the planning board waive the site plan public hearing for this project in accordance with Town Code 10-151.
Second. Moved in second to waive site plan hearing, call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
If you want to see the architectural stuff, you might want to look at that before, looking at the next resolution.
Yep.
Did you have anything for architecture?
So this is a sample board. As you can see, there are different metal panels that are going to be put on the existing facade. Some are up above the window line, which is a much larger panel, with a much smaller panel down at the window level and below. And... And there will also be a stone veneer that is added to the front as well. So, those metal panels range in various colors that you can see on the elevation. We do have the brick piers with a stone cap, and the stone cap will also be on the masonry veneer below the window line. This material here is a metal panel that has a wood grain, which is this material on the towers that's over the doors.
Yep. The renderings are never exactly like the actual colors.
It's difficult to print the way the actual color is, but I have this board which I can leave with you.
Yep. Which material is the wall, are the walls of the service corral that'll be on the front and on the side?
None of these depict the corral. It's just a wood fence that's stained. So, it's actually this small.
Okay.
Small piece here, but again, it's just a photograph, so the exact color may vary.
Where's that center? It looks like an orangish from here, anyway.
That is this band.
The band across, okay. I see it's stone, two different stone samples and a.
Yeah, so the red is the brick piers, the lighter gray is the stone veneer, and this would be the stone cap on the brick piers.
Okay. Looks good to me. Anybody else have any architectural comments? All right, heading with the motion.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan and architectural approval for 110 Grill, Poughkeepsie Galleria project as depicted in the planning board application and for submitted material and color samples subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. Set response to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness inclusive of, but not limited to, the following 1 through 4.
Moved in seconded, grant, grant site plan and architectural. Called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
You could give the architectural panel to Bianca there, and we'll hold on to that.
All right.
Thank you.
Next stop is One Duchess Avenue, the O'Neill Group Dutton LLC. Recommendation to the Town Board regarding waterfront housing overlay district, WHOD designation, for development of two four-story buildings with 84 dwelling units and a third building with 4,000 square feet of commercial space on approximately four acres into town that is part of a larger mixed-use waterfront redevelopment involving an approximately 14.3-acre site in the town and city of Poughkeepsie combined. One Duchess Avenue, the town portion's owned IH Heavy Industry and WD2 Waterfront District 2 currently. City of Poughkeepsie Common Council is lead agency. It's the type-one action, and the final EAS is on file.
Evening, Louis Kaufman with the applicant, the O'Neill Dutton. We're here tonight, we're in the process of requesting a change of zone for the property. Currently, it's industrial, heavy industrial. We're asking for it to be designated waterfront housing overlay district, which was an overlay district created with our development in mind. The initial application was the resolution denying it by the Town Board. We have taken the suggestions from the Town Board as well as the planning department, and we went back and we reduced the number of buildings from eight to three, two of which are now residential, and the third one is parallel to the Hudson River and will be a commercial building. The two, the older buildings were four-story, the remain, residential buildings remain four-story, the commercial building is one-story. We, there were questions that were asked about what types of units are going to be ones and two bedrooms. The market that we're attracting right now, because the buildings are almost identical to two of the buildings that were currently under construction and will be ready for occupancy this summer, we're finding that they're predominantly young professionals and, you know, empty nesters, you know, people that want to stay in the Poughkeepsie area, but they've, are downsizing from their homes. And there's the public Greenway Trail, which has always been there, about 0.7, 0.8 acres of which is in the town. The city of Poughkeepsie has agreed, at the request of the town, to own the Greenway Trail and maintain it. We're going to install it. There was a plan in effect, there is a plan in effect that was reviewed and was approved by the Town Board two years ago, and, but because of the lack of interest in the design as it was then, they withdrew that approval for the public Greenway Trail. We've agreed to real estate taxes, whether they be in a pilot form to pay with the town in accordance with what the standard assessment rates would be. We're going to have, so there's a lot more open space now with just the two buildings, with three buildings. And so, there's more room for, there was concern about the snow storage. We have a more open space. We have a barbecue area with seating in the town area, as well as the town residents will be using the amenity area that is in the city portion, which includes three pools, clubhouse, and outdoor dining and barbecue, outdoor TV, and things of that nature. The buildings themselves will have indoor amenities, community room, and things of that nature. We also have on the rooftops, a balcony, a terrace that will be landscaped and will permit the residents, any resident in the buildings, that will be common area for the buildings. You can get out there and you can see the Hudson. Of course, there'll be, there's lots of construction jobs created. There'll be additional permanent jobs created for the town, and there'll be retail or commercial, whatever the uses of that building are. We're not yet seeing what the, you know, what the attraction is commercially, but there will be jobs created for that building as well.
On the commercial.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right. The rooftop will also have a, the commercial building will also have a rooftop access and a view of the Hudson. And there's, the architectural type would be harmonious with the balance of the project now, and the, there's a model already available, which I invite you all to come and look at. The, we'll actually, like I said, we'll have residency hopefully in the two, first two buildings this summer, but you can see what the one apartment is like right now. So, please come on down, take a look. There's no, you know, I don't need bird's eye fly eyes anymore. You can come and look. You'll see what it looks like. And so, if you have any questions, the board did not have a problem before. They'd recommended the older thing, so, and we believe that the suggestions have made it a better project, and so, we are seeking your recommendation again so we can move forward to change the zone.
All right, thanks. Eric?
That's me, actually.
Oh, it's you.
Yeah. So, yeah, as Louis alluded to, you know, back in September of 2014, the planning board did vote to recommend the designation of the waterfront housing overlay district on the site. In the Town Board, ultimately, when they, when they decided against making that designation in 2016, they identified six specific reasons in their resolution, and I believe most of those have been addressed in the current submiddle, and we did come back, they came back to the Town Board earlier this year, talked about those things and answered some additional questions. So, at this point, we're looking at it strictly from the standpoint of the rezoning. Obviously, if the rezoning were to go forward, this would come back to the planning board for site plan approval. And there's certainly details that we will need to look at at that time. Both the Town Board and the planning board, in this case, are involved agencies under seeker, so in each case, there will be findings that will need to be made by those boards. I've asked the applicant to prepare, you know, a project assessment basically to kind of talk a little bit about what's changed in the project since the, since the environmental impact statement was approved back in 2012, and how that impacts or changes any of the things that might have been, the findings that were made at that time. I think that's it for now. Let's see, have other questions?
No, that's good. I think we'll just go around the board with some questions on this. Anything from engineering at this point? Probably not. As far as reaffirming, start with Peter.
Doesn't seem possible. Five years. We recommended to the Town Board. The Town Board came back and they expressed, as Mike just mentioned, there were six items: no viable commercial mix, density too high, not enough open space, no onsite recreation, insufficient parking, driveway aisle too narrow, and insufficient snow storage. Have you addressed most of those or all of those items specifically with the Town Board since then?
We've addressed all of them. The one issue about the number of units, we, you know, it just was not financially viable, but we made it, I believe, a very palatable alternate in that we have only two buildings now. They're four stories, as was the old plan, and as I said, you really don't have to have any guesswork anymore about what they're going to look like. I suggest, if you haven't been down there, you come on down, you'll see how nice we're doing, and you come on in and you'll see how nicely fitted out the unit is. And other than that, every one of those items were addressed. There's more parking, we, they changed the parking, the waterfront housing overlay zone had 1.5 parking spaces per unit. The Town Board asked for 1.25 per bedroom. That's been met. There's, you know, we, it is more open space now. We have an actual amenity area within the town to supplement the amenity area in the city, and of course, you have a park, Greenway Trail, so there's a lot more space there. So, in terms of that, what the planning board had looked at, you know, obviously, we have to come back here with a lot more detail, which we will, if we can get to the next round, so we're trying.
So, we can reasonably anticipate, if the Town Board gives it the go-ahead, when we get your submission, your submission will reflect adjustments in those concerns that were expressed by the Town Board previously when they rejected your application?
Yes, correct. We've worked back and forth with the Town Board and with Michael, and we've come to resolve on the issues that were outlined in that, those six points, Peter. Yeah, very well.
Okay.
And we wouldn't be here unless they were worked out.
All right. Terrific. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Ben?
Nothing. Looks good to me.
Nicole?
No, nothing really. Just, you know, obviously, if this, if this is approved, there'll be rec fees involved. And, but, you know, it looks like a good project, and like you said, maybe we should go down there and see it for ourselves, what it looks like, what it could possibly look like for the town side of things, and go from there. So, yeah, thank you.
I think up to now, it's no new comments here.
Bob?
Yeah, I was up on the walkway this morning and saw the current state. It looks very good. It looked better with landscaping and grass growing there.
Yeah.
And we'll get up there and take a look at what the insides are. I look forward to it.
You'd like it. You said to come down and take a look at a model, for which entrance would you come in through, through Duchess Avenue or through Water Street?
We happen to have our asset manager with us, so I'll give her, she'll, do you have your card with you, Jessica? Why don't we leave some cards with you? You can do that. Right now, we're, the, the old entrance, which was down near the river, has been closed.
Okay.
And we're going to be paving those roads very soon. So, right now, you would come in through North Water Street.
Got you.
And the road's a little bumpy, but then you park on the, there's a parking deck there that was a part of the city approvals, and then Jessica will come on out and greet you and give you a nice blue helmet, and you can take a look.
All right, thanks. My initial questions were, you have any signs of what you're, more of a site plan issue, but for the commercial, is that like a restaurant-type of thing, or you don't know yet?
I don't, you know, we would be minimal to a restaurant if, you know, if an architect wanted his offices there, we wouldn't object, but no, you know, that's, at this point, you know, what it will do is going to generate jobs, you know, for whatever business it is. You know, restaurants are, you know, immediately come to mind, but, you know, it's going to be a very nice office space as well, and, you know, there's a variety of things that go through our heads, but, you know, such as the office suites, where, you know, you have the back offices for a larger company that works in Westchester or New York, and then you, you know, rent, you know, a cubicle or an office, and, you know, you have a common, you know, there's multiple things.
It's a nice view of the river, if you had some outdoor dining there, whatever.
You know.
I think a restaurant would be nice, right?
Well, you know, we have the.
With the beer garden on the roof there.
Well, right, but we have to put a high fence if it's a beer garden.
But we'll see. I mean, I guess if it was to be a restaurant or something, the only suggestion I would have site plan-wise is to try to avoid traffic in front of it, so it'd be right up on the river, dining patio or something, but whoever it works out. What was the space next to the commercial? Is just a green space you're showing there?
Yes.
Just some additional, so you didn't need additional parking there?
Right.
See if I have any other questions.
You know, our neighbors, which were a little, they had some trepidation originally, you know, Hudson River Rowing Association and Vassar and a variety of others, they came down to the Town Board meetings and they supported us this time.
Okay.
And so, there are no objections from any of the neighbors. Of course, we'll be giving them notice about the change of zone as required, so, so, you know, but.
Yeah, remember, that came up last time.
Yeah, so that was right. So, I mean, a better reception this time.
Well, they see how nice the buildings look as they're coming along.
I think that helps. Just have to involve, invest tens of millions of dollars, and then you get people to see what it looks like. No problem.
I guess the only thing I'd mention site plan-wise, you know, since it's on the Greenway Trail, if that is a restaurant or something, that, any, any commercial thing that somebody's visiting, a bike ride would be nice.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. I think we're good for a motion then.
I move that the planning board is hereby see of this application from the Town Board. We'll make a recommendation to the Town Board within the days of this date pursuant to 210-21.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Let's have a little, little discussion here. Yeah. So, what's everybody's prerogative? I think we're, we could decide whether we recommend, recommend to the Town Board or to rezone or not. I guess my, my thought is that, you know, we'd have, they'd have to waive the fourth floor as opposed to the Town Code, but everything else is in, four stories in the site as it exists. They get the 84 units that way with the fourth floor that they had before, and I think it looks okay to waive that personally. I don't know what everybody else's viewpoint is, and I think we're ready to recommend for.
Okay.
Or not.
Okay. Pursuant to 210-21.1, I move that the planning board recommend to the Town Board that the application does support a waterfront housing overlay designation.
Moved in seconded, called to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Arlington Farms Malabar Realty LLC, time extension of an approved site plan for proposed demolition of existing structures on the site and construction of a one-story gas station convenience store with a gas canopy and four gas pumps. convenience store with a gas canopy and four gas pumps at seven-ninety-eight Duchess Turnpike and two-nineteen Over rocker Road, its own business highway. Site plan was granted approval on December seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen. I move that the planning board grant a time extension of conditional site plan approval for two-ninety-day periods from May twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, forward to November twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Seconded, call to all question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Any other business on the board tonight? Do you hear any motion?
I move that we terminate this meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded to terminate the meeting, I call to question, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Man was votes tonight.